Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Dooley. Mayor Protem Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Hunnen.
Here.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Valani.
Here.
Mayor Dean.
Here. Our first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Patterson with support from Councilmember Valani. Are there any changes or corrections?
I'd like to move that we remove item two from the agenda of the consent agenda today.
Okay. Is there a second?
Support.
Okay. So. You're removing that?
Yes.
And call the roll, please.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hunnen?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to open citizens' comments now. We've come to the moment this evening where you can express your thoughts on items that are not on tonight's agenda. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. You have three minutes to tell us what's on your mind and in your heart. Please direct your comments to the chair. No booing, clapping, cheering, et cetera. Members of council will not engage with you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed and by a member of city staff or department, you can leave your name and email. There's a table right outside the door, and someone will get back with you.
Good evening, members of council. Mike Matthews-Pennan in here. Some of you know me. I got to sit where you sat or are sitting a little while ago. In fact, I don't think I had to use these back then. I'll see what I can do. I haven't had a reason to come. You know, it's a lot of important time spent here. Nothing's really bugged me enough to come see you until recently. I had a meeting with some of my neighbors, and we're trying to gauge the importance, the level of concern in the community regarding the cessation of chipper service. So we came up with a plan. Let's do some petitions. So we went door to door, football game, softball games, church events, things like that, and gathered 281 signatures. I realize that's a small percentage of the total populace. We could have easily gotten 10 times that number if we spent a little bit more time. But I just thought that hopefully this would get your attention, that this is very important to practically everybody I talked to. Some of the comments that were made in addition to, yeah, let me sign that right now, please, was maybe the fact that we don't have a financial director is affecting expenditures. I understand that the chipper costs were factored into the budget regardless of the millage vote outcome. I'm not voting for any incumbents. And if I would have known more about the impact of the vote that failed, maybe I would have voted, or at least I would have voted yes. People said different things. I voted. A lot of people voted. Not enough people voted. I voted yes. But I certainly didn't think the impact was going to be as great as we seem to be feeling. I think there's a continued misunderstanding of the corrosive effects of headley and Prop. A. People don't understand the way it keeps stepping back and how we need to renew the millage from time to time. And I think we, as a city, did not do a good job in delivering that message. And unfortunately, the result is cuts, as we all know. I just wanted to take this opportunity to suggest to you that this particular item is very important to people. So I count some of you as friends. I hope that we can remain friends now and by the time we solve this problem. So I'd like to present to the clerk our 281 signatures. Many of them are actual signatures. There are some of them that represent an online presence. We thought we'd go high-tech, so we got some of those. So I appreciate you taking that. Thank you very much for your time. I know in times past when an issue has come up, we've lined the hallways with people. And I don't think that's effective. So I'd like to think of you, to think about 281 people standing in the room here, not wasting your time tonight. So I have a few folks that have come with me. We're going to leave now, not in any disrespect, but we've got to go plan our next move. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten, could you make sure that we're using the timer?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Or I'm not, thank you. Anyone else for public comments? Ms. Mitchell, have you received anything that you would like to enter into the record at this time?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to close public comments, 7:06. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
One, approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the 39th regular city council meeting on Monday, August 14, 2023, and special city council meeting on Monday, August 28, 2023. Two, proclamation number P-2723. Matter proclaiming October 2023 as Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce Month. Three, proclamation number P-2823. Matter proclaiming October 2023 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Four, proclamation number P-2923. Matter proclaiming October 2023 as National Cybersecurity Awareness Month. Five, proclamation number P-3023. Matter proclaiming October 2023 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And six, proclamation number P-3123. Matter proclaiming September 2023 as Uterine Cancer Awareness Month.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Gavin with support from Councilmember Baker. And we made a correction previously. Are there any additional corrections or additions? Okay. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on the consent agenda.
Hunnen?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The consent agenda has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognizations, presentations. Matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Councilmember Valani will read proclamation number P-2723.
All right. So a proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, proclaiming October 2023 as Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce Month. Whereas, the Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce works with the Berkeley area business community to advance the civic, economic, personal, social, and cultural systems of our area. And whereas, the Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce has contributed to the protection and commerce of Berkeley business climate for over 35 years since its incorporation. And whereas, the Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce, under the guidance of its Board of Directors, works to promote the region's business community through education, information, and the many networking and training opportunities that are developed by the Chamber. And whereas, the Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce and its members provide citizens with a strong business environment that increases employment, retail trade and commerce, and business growth to make the City of Berkeley a better place to live. And whereas, in the wake of COVID-19, the Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce has remained adaptable and resilient in planning Art Bash and Street Art Fest to momentous events that help our local economy flourish. And whereas, the Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce supports the municipalities by hosting the State of the City's event, which provides updates from the City of Berkeley, the City of Huntington Woods, the Berkeley School District, and Downtown Development Authority, and the Chamber itself to the citizens. And whereas, the Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce encourages the growth of existing services and commercial firms and encourages new firms and individuals to locate in the City of Berkeley. And whereas, the Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce is supported by the financial and volunteer resources of over 150 small and medium-sized businesses located and operating in the Berkeley and Huntington Woods area. Now, therefore, the City of Berkeley hereby proclaims Section 1 that the month of October 2023 is hereby proclaimed as Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce Month in the City of Berkeley. Proclaimed this 18th day of September 2023 at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council. Signed, Bridgette Dean, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Patterson will read proclamation number P-2823.
Thank you. A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, proclaiming October 2023 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas, October 2023 is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And whereas, National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, NVCAM, educates women and men about early breast cancer detection, diagnosis, and treatment. And whereas, National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is dedicated to increasing public knowledge about the importance of early detection of breast cancer with national public service organizations, professional organizations, and government agencies who work together to ensure that NBCAM message is heard by thousands of women, men, and their families. And whereas, October 2023 is National Mamography Day. And on this day or throughout the month, women are encouraged to make mammography appointment. And whereas, mammograms are the best method to detect breast cancer early when it is easier to treat. And whereas, breast cancer is the most common cancer, except for skin cancer, and it is estimated that in 2023, there will be more than 287,850 new cases of female breast cancer and an estimated 43,250 people will die of this disease. And whereas, although breast cancer in men is rare, in 2021, an estimated 2,650 men were diagnosed with breast cancer in the United States. And whereas, there are over 3.8 million breast cancer survivors in the United States. And whereas, the statistics are staggering, yet we are encouraged to know that survival rates have drastically improved in recent years due to increased awareness and innovation advancements and early detection and treatment. And whereas, physicians, researchers, public health professionals, and advocates have made tremendous progress in the fight against breast cancer, which is evident by the decline in mortality rates from the disease nationwide. Now, therefore, the City of Berkeley hereby proclaims Section 1 that the month of October 2023 is hereby proclaimed as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Berkeley. Proclaimed this 18th day of September 2023 at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council. Signed, Bridgette Dean, Mayor.
Thank you. I'm taking the liberty to read the proclamation declaring September as Uterine Cancer Month in the City of Berkeley. A proclamation declaring September 2023 as Uterine Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Berkeley. Whereas, uterine cancer is the sixth most common cancer in women worldwide and the most common gynecologic cancer in North America, Europe, and Australia. And whereas, uterine cancer making up nearly 50% of all gynecologic cancer cases in high-income countries. And whereas, in 2020 alone, there were 417,367 new cases and 97,370 reported deaths from uterine cancer. And whereas, this year in the U.S., it is estimated that there will be 66,200 new cases of uterine cancer and 13,030 deaths. And whereas, incidence rates across all races combined continue to increase by almost 2% per year in women younger than 50 and by 1% per year in older women. And whereas, mortality rates also continue to rise with an increase of 0.7% annually from 2016 to 2020. And whereas, there are no recommended screening tests for women at average risk. Advocating awareness of symptoms such as abdominal uterine bleeding or post-menopausal bleeding is crucial to early detection. And whereas, uterine cancer is consistently ranked at the bottom of research funding across different cancer types. And whereas, although the International Gynecologic Cancer Society announced the inaugural Uterine Cancer Awareness Month as June 2023, the City of Berkeley and its city council wanted to add its voice to the raising awareness. And now, therefore, the City of Berkeley hereby proclaims Section 1 that the month of September 2023 is hereby proclaimed as Uterine Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Berkeley. Proclaimed this 18th day of September 2023 at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council. Bridgette Dean, Mayor. I would also like to take this opportunity to introduce Liz Petrie. Liz is a Berkeley resident, a volunteer, a cheerleader for Berkeley, and she also is fighting uterine cancer, although she's got great news for us. But welcome, Liz. It's so good to see you again in this space.
I stand here not for sympathy, but to raise awareness. Uterine cancer is on the rise in women in their 30s and their 20s, and they don't know why. Doctors don't know why yet. The most common signs of symptoms, and there could be many reasons why you have these symptoms. That's why it's so important to keep up with your exams, is abnormal bleeding, pain in the pelvis region, pain during intercourse, weight loss, abnormal discharge. Those at higher risk of getting uterine cancer are early age menstruation, obesity, women who have not had children, women taking Tamoxifen, and women of color. Typically, this cancer hits women around 60. But again, the numbers are on the rise. That's why I urge you, don't skip your appointments. I did, for a few years, thanks to COVID and everything else. In March of this year, I got diagnosed with stage reuterine cancer. I went through 18 weeks of chemotherapy, and I'm very delighted to say I stand before you cancer-free.
That's awesome.
Thank you. If anyone would like more information, share their journey, need moral support, they can email me, and it's all lowercase, elizabethpetrie369@gmail.com, or reach out to me through social media at Liz Barca-Petrie, and I'll be happy to talk to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. And I know you have something coming up perhaps with your church we talked about, another, if you know the status of that.
I'm trying to work with schedules with my oncologist to have a talk at my church, which is in Royal Oak, be open to the public on the five different cancers women can get in her reproductive region. So that's still in the works. We're just juggling schedules right now.
All right, well, we'll look forward to an update on that. Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number two on tonight's regular agenda?
Motion number M-6223. Matter of authorizing the Berkeley Instrumental Boosters Orchestra Association, 2325 Cotelpa Drive, Berkeley, Michigan, to conduct Berkeley Tag Days 2023 in the City of Berkeley on Friday, October 6, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., Saturday, October 7, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Sunday, October 8, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Is there a motion to approve M-6223?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Patterson with support from Councilmember Valani. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. So this is a charitable solicitation permit. The application comes before you because it utilizes the city's sidewalks in order to make a charitable solicitation to Passersby. As we've known this event for years and years, it's run without incident. But students will be throughout the community playing music for Passersby. And if one is so inclined, they would then make a donation to, sort of, a hat being passed, if you will. This is a fundraising event. All the proceeds go to the Tag Days Committee, which is a combination of the Berkeley High School Band, Choir, and Orchestra. Again, this has been looked at by each of the departments that would have some jurisdiction here, and it's been recommended for approval.
Thank you. Is there anyone here from the Berkeley Boosters that would like to? Okay, perhaps not. Any public comments? Discussion from council? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. I look forward to this event every year, and I'm really pleased to see that it's back on the docket for another round. It's so much fun to see the kids out there having creativity and energy, and they're busking for a couple of bucks. You know, that kind of stuff, it's really fun. So I'll absolutely be supporting this tonight, and I'll be supporting them at many of the locations throughout our downtown. So thank you for bringing this to us tonight.
Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hunnen?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Motion number M-6223 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-6323. Matter of approving the purchase of a 2023 EL-250 Ford Transit van from Lughammer Ford in the amount of $56,276 to replace a damaged 2008 GMC van.
Is there a motion to approve M-6323?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Hunnen?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Baker. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the motion indicates, unfortunately, we had a van that was rear-ended in traffic, not the fault of our own driver, just another driver in traffic. So we put it to this insurance company. Insurance companies did deem it to be a loss. And so we come before you this evening in hopes of replacing that existing vehicle.
Thank you. Mr. Young?
Good afternoon or good evening. So the van we're looking to replace here is one that normally we wouldn't keep, but we've poured so much money into this van with a new engine and transmission while we're waiting for the replacement that we ordered back in 2021 to come in. We decided we were going to rotate that over, and that was going to cover our lead services and additional meter repairs that we're looking to do this year. We'd really like to accelerate our meter repair program, or meter replacement program, I should say, to get everybody on the new technology that allows radio reads instead of the traditional walk to each house and touch-to-touch pad. Unfortunately, it was struck, and it was total loss. And we just happened to, the van that we originally ordered, I don't know if you remember coming back to council in April of this year to make a change. The van we originally ordered held our spot in line. And now it's entering production phase, so it's still another two to three months out.
Okay.
And I don't want to say I'm optimistic, but I'm hoping that the schedule's right this time. I've heard that quite a bit. We're also evaluating what equipment we'd want to put in that van, so that'll come at a later date.
Okay.
Mr. Baumgarten was down there today, and we're going over a van that got delivered last week, finally, and looking what we can delete off of it that makes sense to try and save some costs as well, because we don't need double of everything on this van.
We appreciate that. Any discussion from council? Councilmember Hunnen?
Yeah, since this wasn't initially in our budget, where do we anticipate the monies coming for both the new vehicle and the equipment that'll go into it?
So the offset of this, we do a lot of lead service replacements that are state-mandated every year. With the Wiltshire project, just about every service on the city side was led, so all those count. So it requires us to do a little less this year. So we have a pretty substantial savings on the lead service replacements, which is still a 592 account. So that account overall will be in the positive, but it's from where it was. But that's where we're expecting the offset.
And for the millions watching at home, our 592 account is the shorthand fund number for the water and sewer account. So it's separate from our general funds, separate from our road millages, separate from our infrastructure. It's very specifically the fund that we utilize. You know, we deliver clean water, and we make sure dirty water is removed.
You mentioned lead service lines. I think this is a perfect opportunity to talk a little bit about unfunded mandates, and I'm certainly not saying that you have to talk about that. But, you know, the state often will make a rule and tell us we have to do something, but does not provide the financing to do that. So the mandate was, replace your lead service lines. And so the city has to basically foot the bill for that. And this is something that I think oftentimes people are unaware of, but there are times that the state hands down these mandates, and we are obligated to comply, no matter what the cost. And so when Mr. Young mentioned that there would be a substantial savings because of the Wiltshire project, that does not go unnoticed. We're very pleased to have that, so thank you for opening that door.
No problem. Currently, we're spending over $1 million a year on lead service replacements that we didn't have to do prior to that.
Right.
It's mandated from the state. Not a lot of help. There's a lot of grant programs and stuff, but it's, you know, you're getting three times the applicants' there are money.
Right.
It's going to underserved communities, and we really don't fall in that category.
Correct. But thank you for trying. Appreciate that. Any other discussion from council?
I just had one. Was there equipment in the van? Was that damaged, or you think you'll be able to reuse that? I'm sorry. Will you be able to reuse that in the new van?
Unfortunately, the equipment in the van was specifically for that van, which they don't, I don't think they even make that anymore. We had the propackage, so the sides were open, so the shelving and stuff was different. So all that, that was part of the negotiation of the total losses with that van, unfortunately.
Councilmember Valani?
Yeah, so you mentioned that the lead service lines are going to offset from Wiltshire the cost of them. Will that fully offset the cost of the van, partially? Can you give like a ballpark there?
You should save more on lead service line replacements for the number that we did on Wiltshire. It was 20, I would say 25 to be conservative, at $8,500 apiece. So it more than offsets the cost of the van.
Okay. Any public comment? Okay, thank you, Mr. Young. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on M-6323?
I do have one email.
Oh, sorry.
On it, yep.
Yeah, our new format.
Regarding this item. Joshua Hunter, Berkeley, stated in regards to M-6323, this purchase contract should not be authorized until there is a new budget appropriation for Section 9.5 of the city charter, the included section. Furthermore, why is a 15-year-old van to be replaced not included in the seven-year capital equipment replacement plan if it is necessary to maintain existing water services? Also, in regard to the 2023, oops, that's another item, sorry. Okay. I will call it on that.
Thank you.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hunnen?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. M-6323 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number four on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-6423. Matter of approving the purchase of a 2023 combination sewer cleaning machine from Jack Dohany Company in the amount of $551,542.27, but the remaining budgeted funds to be held in contingency.
Is there a motion to approve M-6423?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Hunnen?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Patterson. Mr. Baumgarten?
May I just quick process note, just to say that we do utilize all sorts of different manners by which we try to find the best source possible and the best price possible. In this case, I want to commend Mr. Young and his staff, who found a source well-competitive contract for this purchase, and it did end up saving us quite a bit over the amount that we had budgeted originally.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Young?
So this is one of our big-ticket items. It's one of our most visible, other than the sweeper. I think sweeper is probably our most visible, but probably one of our most important pieces. This is the piece we use to maintain our sewers, keep them clean, get them ready for inspection along with the sewer camera. We've gone round and round with this, different years, different replacement cycles. And that five-to-seven-year mark seems to be the sweet spot where you're getting a better return on your resale end of it and your purchase price. You know, purchase price unfortunately goes up every year. And even at a 7%, you're talking $35,000 every year. So that, over the years, we've found that's been our best period to sell the vehicle. It prevents some of the large maintenance items. Kind of transfers that cost to the next owner. The unit we have is still in good shape, so we should, to get a good resale value, maybe half the money back. We're looking at a little over 50% return.
Well, I appreciate your hard work and really looking at everything from all the angles, not only with this purchase, but the previous one as well. I know that you're being conscientious and mindful of our dollars, and that is much appreciated. Any public comment on this agenda item? Discussion from council? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, just appreciation. I'll echo our mayor's gratitude for you and the team on what you do to make sure that we have up-to-date equipment that can provide the best service possible, obviously.
that can provide the best service possible. Obviously, sewers are important to us here and, and everything we can do to help with that. And plus, you're keeping an eye on the return on the prior vehicle and, and, uh, so I'm, uh, appreciative of how you find like that sweet spot, right? Where we can get half the money back on, uh, from the prior vehicle. So it's, you know, it's considerable value for the community. So thank you for that. Thanks to you and the team.
Thank you, Sean. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M sixty-four twenty-three.
Baker?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Motion number M sixty-four twenty-three has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number five on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R twenty-one twenty-three, matter of adopting a resolution of the council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan to formally rename J.C. Park to Bacon Park.
Is there a motion to approve R twenty-one twenty-three?
So moved.
Support.
Okay. Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Gavin with support from Councilmember Baker.
Love bacon.
Here we go. Mr. Baumgarten?
Uh, Mayor, uh, joined by the Parks Recreation Director Theresa McCarlton on this. Uh, I don't have anything specific to this, but I would like to give some kudos to her and her staff again. Uh, anybody who's not been to this park is missing out. I don't care how old you are.
Right.
Um, it is an absolute jewel.
Teresa?
Good evening. Um, so as the resolution states, um, historically, the park was named Bacon Park. For a lot of people, they never stopped calling it Bacon Park when it was adopted by the J.C.'s, uh, several decades ago. Um, J.C.'s no longer exist in the city. Um, there has been discussion over the last several years amongst staff, um, city administration, um, council, recreation advisory board about renaming it. And the decision was made that knowing that there were going to be these updates and there was going to be, uh, the renovations and the development at the park, there's still more to go. But, um, right now where it's at, it seemed like the perfect time that this was the right time to formally rename it. Um, that is, uh, your responsibility and your call to do that. Um, and we're hopeful that it'll return to the historic name and, um, that once again it'll be known as Bacon Park officially and unofficially.
Sounds good. Any public comment on this item? Come on up.
Good evening. Tom Merritt, Levon Catalpa. Um, just a couple of quick questions. I, I do like the way the park is being redone. It does look pretty nice. But I'm also looking to get some clarity on the financial impact of redoing the name. Literature needs to be redone, websites, any flyers that we do, signs, uh, considering how much signage and stuff costs and stuff like that for a park that is already over budget on their reconstruction and the way that, um, we probably should not be smiling at everything that's going over budget in the city. I'd like to know about the impact of renaming this park at this time and, you know, for the, you know, as much as we'd like to have Bacon Park back, you know, we are cutting costs everywhere across the board. We're trying to, trying to maintain fiscal responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want me to respond to part of that? No?
Um, it is always the case, if anyone wants to follow up with staff, as you mentioned at the beginning of your, your opening statements, um, sign-in sheets is available, name, address, and like a prompt, and then staff can follow up.
Thank you. Any discussion from council?
I, I just have one. I, I mean, I feel like we've been working on renaming it to the Bacon Park for years since my, um, stay on Parks and Rec Advisory Board before my appointment to council, but it's, um, I think, like you said, everyone's already calling it Bacon. Um, and it, you have done a fantastic job, you and your staff over there.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on R twenty-one twenty-three.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. R twenty-one twenty-three has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number six on tonight's agenda?
Ordinance number O nine twenty-three, matter of considering the second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan to add Article Five Retail Pet Store Sales in Chapter Two Animals of the Berkeley City Code to prohibit retail pet stores in the city from selling dogs, cats, or rabbits.
Is there a motion to approve O zero nine twenty-three?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Henon?
Support.
With support from Mayor Pro Tem Gavin. Mr. Baumgarten?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I, I know the city attorney did the bulk of the work on this, so just a brief introduction. Uh, this is a continuation of the conversation we've been having regarding how to, uh, formally end the practice of, of allowing or by zoning or by ordinance, uh, the retail sale of dogs, cats, uh, and rabbits in pet stores. Um, council's had a good number of conversations on this, uh, both in open and closed session. Um, and I think we've gotten to the point that accurately reflects the conversations that we've had up to this point.
Thank you. Mr. Sterin?
Um, yes. Uh, everybody in the room probably knows we've been at this for the, or really for most of twenty twenty-three so far. Uh, and the ordinance has gone through a number of iterations. Actually, several months ago, was it March or April, maybe even May, uh, the city council actually did adopt an ordinance for first reading. Um, and what that ordinance, which is very similar to the one you're looking at tonight, um, would have done is would have prospectively prohibited the retail sale of dogs, cats, really just dogs and cats at that time. Um, would have prevented any future stores from opening, any expansions, that sort of thing. With regard to the existing business in the city, that original ordinance would have grandfathered it in indefinitely. Now, when the council adopted that ordinance for first reading, the council also adopt, also directed that we wanted to study and work more on the second part, what to do about the existing store. And as the council knows and, and the folks here, a lot of familiar faces who've been following this for a long time, we've gone through a number of different drafts and iterations as to how to do it. Uh, what you have before you tonight is something much more closely to akin, more akin, uh, to the, uh, the ordinance that was adopted for first reading. It would still prohibit the, the retail sale of dogs and cats, also adds rabbits, um, would prevent the expansion of any stores, the relocation of any stores, that type of thing. With regard to the, uh, existing store, uh, it does temporarily grandfather it in and by temporarily, I mean it isn't in indefinitely, but as written and following the direction of council, um, it would correspond to the store's lease as it currently exists. So they'd be allowed to continue for the duration of their current lease and then, and then that's it. I should also mention that if this ordinance is adopted tonight, council is also directed that there be another part to this. And that is that we come back with a further regulatory ordinance, perhaps at your next meeting, which will pick up a number of the things we have been talking about in terms of, 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 uh, reporting requirements. There were a number of them. Uh, reporting requirements, also perhaps instituting a permitting or, or licensing system for the existing business, just so we can monitor it, uh, make sure that they are doing what they're supposed to, supposed to be doing, uh, and that they aren't improperly sourcing their animals from puppy mills and the likes, which is really the genesis and the catalyst for this, uh, this entire ordinance. So, um, I'm rambling on here. I should shut up, if, let the public speak and certainly if there's any questions from council.
Thank you. Public comment?
Hi.
Hello.
Carla Osborne, Berkeley resident. It's been a long haul. And I know that nothing in government moves faster. This kind of does, is moving faster than most things, so. So it's, here we are. We're thirty-five days since the last meeting. Um, what have we learned? Um, we've learned that between March and June of this year, the current business operating in Berkeley has brought in approximately a hundred dogs, according to the CBI registry from the state of Michigan. Um, according to their Facebook page, um, they have listed thirty-two new dogs just in the last thirty-five days that they've brought in. We have learned a few names of their breeders, uh, who are supplying them dogs. Um, that include Jeff and Anna Grabber, AKA Fairview Kennels, uh, of Indiana, who as of May of this year showed to have a hundred and twenty-three dogs on their property. That is a puppy mill. I don't care which way you try to spin it. They also, the same company, breeders, also supply dogs to Petland, which is also a very well-known puppy mill store across the United States who has been hit with quite a few vice violations as well. Um, another breeder that they are using, that we have documentation of, um, is Homer Slaboff, AKA Sunrise Kennels, also in Indiana, who their last USDA inspection of April twenty twenty-two shows sixty dogs on their property. Again, this is not just somebody breeding their dog, you know, in their home. These are, where do you keep a hundred and twenty-three dogs? You, you don't keep them in your living room. You're not able to provide them with the care that they deserve. These are not humane-type facilities. If a business is allowed to continue for the duration of their lease for ten years, that comes out to over four thousand dogs for just this one business that we are allowing to come into our state and be sold. Four thousand dogs that the city has grandfathered into being allowed to be stripped from their mothers, the same mothers and fathers that are bred to death and be thrown away like a rag at the end of the day. I understand that we have a financial responsibility. We also have an ethical responsibility. Just because something is legal does not make it right. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla.
Hello. Um, Rachel Schuler, Royal Oak resident, prior Berkeley resident. Um, just want to say thank you for your time, for, uh, allowing us the space, um, in listening ears. Um, we've been here for a really long time. Um, it's pretty exhausting. Uh, we've been debating this, um, with you guys for a while, um, multiple drafts being written, and now we're talking about ten years of the existing business running in Berkeley. Someone can correct me on that, but I believe that is their lease. Um, in regard to the retail pet stores, um, like the one doing business in town, um, we're probably, you're probably not going to stop hearing from us. We'll probably still be coming to every city council making a public comment. Um, in addition to going to other cities who are swiftly, um, working on ordinances and passing, um, things that we want to pass in Berkeley. Uh, we would love for Berkeley to be a leader by example, um, but instead what I'm seeing is that we're choosing the path of most resistance here um, and quote-unquote break pumping, um, and favoring corporate greed from out of state. Mind, might I add you, the owner does not live in Michigan nor Berkeley. Um, we're favoring consumer misinformation, dogs in distress, and might I add, embarrassment. As cities far and wide are preparing for ordinances banning retail sales of cats and dogs, um, from puppy mills like this, from puppy stores, um, while we work to ban, while we work to get, um, more support for a statewide ban. Um, we'll work with our state reps and Michigan senators who have come to this meeting, who have wrote in statements, and we'll continue to work with them, um, on other metro Detroit councils and neighboring counties who will work with us. Um, I do hope that for some in this room who have backpedaled on their support from the previous drafted ordinance that goes to the two-year expiration date to now the ten-year, I hope it does feel uncomfortable lying your head on your pillow tonight because it's uncomfortable for those dogs who are too big for their glass box to lie down in their own filth. It's too uncomfortable for them to wait for an uninformed customer in Berkeley or in the surrounding area to buy them for four thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars with an interest rate of up to twenty-five percent, who ultimately can't afford the pet bill when the dog ultimately becomes sick. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rachel.
Hello again. Um, I am Tiffany Perkins. I'm a resident of Royal Oak. Um, we already have an ordinance passed, so I'm here to support the passing of this ordinance. Um, I have my own local nonprofit rescue called Paws Friend Network. We have paraplegic, amputee, wheelchair, and senior dogs. Um, very specifically, my work has taken a turn to hospice care, um, for puppy mill puppies. Um, when I have senior hospice dogs, it's very sad, um, but specifically having hospice puppies of families that have purchased a congenital malformed dog unknowingly from a pet store, uh, much like the one open on Woodward, it's taxing for me, um, but it's also taxing for the family. They had hopes and dreams and wishes of this puppy that they could grow with, their kids could live with, grow with, develop with, and they get really sick and they weren't told these things. And I have to be the one to take this puppy, um, get it into an MRI, get it into a physical therapist, spend my time nurturing this puppy until it's no longer ethical for it to live. Um, and now in the next ten years, um, these messages will continue to reach me. I will continue to open my arms to these dogs and these families. Um, and it's not going to end, you know, for them. They've made it very clear that they're not being transparent. They haven't actually given us any facts or details since we've started asking for them. Um, we've done our own research with no help of their commitment. They're not here tonight, as far as I know. Um, they showed up one time to guilt, shame, manipulate their tactics to make it sound like they're doing ethical, responsible things, and that's not the case. I see it every single day. Um, so when I say goodbye to these puppies that came from these stores, um, I give them dignity. I honor their life. I take care of them. I love them and I care about them. Um, very specifically, they had a dog, um, a bulldog, a merle bulldog named Buzz. Um, he was there for six months. I tracked his price tag, kept going down as he aged. He disappeared completely. We can't find where Buzz went, um, but documented instances show that he likely ended up in a dumpster. Um, he likely ended up in a freezer and he disappeared without a trace. So we're here tonight to ask that not to be the case, um, to please lead the change of what's ethical and moral. Um, and the euthanasia rate for every other animal welfare locality is published, is transparent, and they answer all of our questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Hello. Um, my name is Thad Dickinson and I'm a resident of Berkeley. Uh, one of the arguments that I've heard against the city of Berkeley approving this ordinance is that a similar statewide bill is being considered in Lansing, and so there's no reason for Berkeley to act now. Um, I've heard that the council needs to tap the brakes on this ordinance, that there's no rush or urgency, and that the council should just wait and see what they do in Lansing. I attended a conference in August where attendees heard a few success stories about states passing animal-friendly legislation. Regardless of the issue or the state, all the stories had something in common. It took years to pass those bills. Ten years was the time span I'd heard cited most often in getting animal-friendly legislation passed at the state level. Maybe they do things quicker in Lansing than other state capitals, but the legislation being considered there, HB four-eight-three-eight, currently doesn't have a single Republican sponsor and there's no guarantee that the bill will be passed soon or at all. I urge you to not wait for Lansing because that could be a really long wait. And the dogs suffering in the puppy mill industry, which is supported by businesses like Puppy Graham, have waited long enough for us to take a stand and help to end their misery. I respectfully ask that you approve this, approve the ordinance under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Tom Merritt again. Um, I just wanted to add in that, um, you know, with all the ups and downs that we have in the city, I've lived here for ten years now and, you know, I come from a Berkeley family, but with all the ups and downs that the city had- but with all the ups and downs that the city has and the council wanting to have the support of the citizens, citizens wanting to support the council and all that, I would suggest that you would, you know, show some resilience in getting this done sooner rather than later because no matter how divided we are on, you know, what our political beliefs are, our religious beliefs, or anything else that, you know, is kind of a big public interest and stuff like that, Berkeley is a city of animal lovers first and foremost. Matter of fact, I think most of us like the animals more than like our neighbors in a lot of ways. So I would ask that the council just take this matter very seriously and don't make, don't make them wait 10 years because this is obviously a good portion of the room that shows up to hear updates on this one. So I think it should be a top priority. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? Okay, I'm closing public comments. Any discussion from council? Councilmember Henin.
10 years isn't, isn't where any of us want to be. Even two years isn't where any of us want to be. Just taking Ms. Perkins, you know, following that bulldog as an example, that's exactly the kind of thing that I want the permitting to uncover and be able to stop. And if we find that those cases or them fabricating information or them not following, you know, constitutional ordinances, you know, within our police powers for permitting, then we have the power and the legal basis to shut them down. You know, they aren't, you know, I don't believe that they're ethical, but we don't have the hard proof that we could win in a court. If we develop that, then we're where we need to be and can take care of this problem. But none of us want to be here. I will be voting yes for this tonight. It's not, it's not where I want it to be, but it's where we have to be for right now.
Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Your Honor. I thank, I'd like to thank staff for continuing to work this, and I want to especially thank my neighbors and colleagues for your love and passion. You may remember I voted against this last time because it had a far broader window than, than I thought was appropriate or humane. And at the same time, I absolutely supported a six-month moratorium on any additional businesses opening up. And I believe that moratorium is nearing its end. So we need to do something tonight. Like my colleague, I am deeply upset about the 10-year window. I don't like that at all. And I really wish that we had had part two of this on tonight's agenda so that we could have a balanced conversation. Because I hear you. I hear you, right? It's like, every minute, every day, it just, it's not good. And this, we need to make sure that this doesn't spread into the city. And so I'm still not sure what I'm going to do tonight, but it, this needs to, we need to have the permanent ban in place for any future things, and that's kind of where I'm leaning, in spite of what I think is wise counsel to at least put that, the lease clause in there. I get it, right? It just hurts. It hurts so bad. And to Lola and Ollie, my dogs, I love you. They're both rescue. And I'm just, I'm torn. This sucks.
It does. Thank you.
Sucks. Thank you.
Councilmember Valani.
I would like to echo my support for Councilmember Henin and Councilmember Baker's comments, and I can also echo that Lola and Ollie are very lovely dogs. And as someone who has owned many rescue dogs, I feel the same emotions that everyone else does right now, but I think our number one goal is to ensure that this does not grow and then come back with some really good protections in place to ensure that if we have this type of activity, it is indeed of an ethical nature.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on O-0923?
Henin?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Ordenance, or motion number O-0923 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number seven on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-6523, matter of considering a 100-day extension, 180-day extension of marijuana business license PMA 20-0029 for Seven Point Dispensing, 28557 Woodward Avenue.
Is there a motion to approve M-6523?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Henin?
Sorry, support.
With support from Councilmember Patterson. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this item that comes before you this evening is an extension of an existing marijuana license that was awarded on October 2nd, 2022. Our ordinance does allow for the, an additional 180 days to be granted by council in its discretion as long as an applicant submits a request in writing to the city manager's office detailing that they are, you know, working on trying to get open and still intend to move forward on it in the future. So this, the application comes, the question that comes before council this evening is not intended to be a show of support for the use or this applicant, or this, even this, the nature of the application itself. It's purely to say an additional six months is needed in order to get open, and that is the standard here, to be fully open in an operation by the end of there. So we, if passed, this will be tacked on to the end of their existing license, start of October, which will give them until April to be completely finished with their, the buildup of their operation and to be serving customers by the start of April. Again, it is not granting any new licenses, not granting any additional permissions. It is merely allowing them to go from 12 months to 18 months in order to fulfill the license that was already granted to them.
Thank you. Mr. Sterren, would you like to weigh in with anything?
The only other thing I've added, this is not the first request the council has seen. I believe you've had two other licensees come before you over the last four or five months, I think it's been. And I believe council has approved both of those extension requests. So you have this one tonight, and then there's also another one on your agenda this evening as well. And these, these are all licenses, licensees that have been approved. They all scored at the top of our, our scoring rankings. And I guess, yeah, unless there are any questions, I think Mr. Baumgarten summed it up pretty well.
Thank you. Is there a representative here from Seven Point that would like to address the council?
Hi, my name is Scott Roberts. I'm the attorney for Seven Point. Seven Point is a company owned by Brad Zerman and Gabe Rubin. Gabe is here along with our, one of our contractors and our architect, Brian Howard. Gabe's also a local resident, a member of the community. You know, Seven Point has been diligently proceeding with this project. However, there has been a couple of delays, which is why we're requesting this extension. The first delay was just the unfortunate fact that, you know, two and a half years of litigation that delayed the process and the issuing of the initial licenses did cause some issues with our financing, which then caused us to have to go back and kind of redo the financing, which did take some time. Secondly, you know, this is something where there is a road project that was actually mentioned earlier in the meeting, the Wiltshire Road Project. We believe we have a great location. It just so happens that it's on the corner of Woodward and Wiltshire. And Rob, who is here with GH Consulting, Contracting, will be able to answer any questions as to how that has delayed the project, but the need to coordinate our project with that project, which has basically just opened up the road right in front of the dispensary, has caused delays. Having said that, you know, Seven Point has diligently pursued this project. They've made progress on a number of points. So far to date, they've spent over a million dollars on this project. They've made binding stormwater commitments for stormwater maintenance. They paid $18,500 to the city in construction permits. They've contracted with construction manager. They finished the sub-bidding process. And most importantly, and I know some of you may know this because you were at the groundbreaking, they've also commenced construction. And if there is an interest to have more details on where they are at the construction process or how the Wiltshire Road has delayed this progress, Rob from GH General Contracting is here and more than willing to fill you in and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any public comment on this agenda item? Discussion from council? Councilmember Valani.
I have some questions. So this would be to Seven Point here. Are you confident that you'll be up and running and this six-month extension will allow you to be fully in operation?
Yes, very confident. Yeah. I mean, weather-dependent to a certain extent, but yes, yes.
Okay, and so to our attorney, Mr. Sterren, what would happen since they are granted one extension? What would happen if we get to a point where, let's say, they're 90% there? There's been weather delays, possibly things out of their control. Where does that leave us?
You're talking about with the six-month extension?
Correct.
And they are short of, short of completion? Well, we're certainly hoping that that won't happen, but certainly anything is possible. We presume that would be anticipated and that there would be some dialogue with the city and come back to council for a discussion about that. But the shorter, simple answer to your question right now is the ordinance does not provide for any further extension beyond the six months. So unless something was done with the ordinance or the ordinance was amended, that would mean the license would expire or relapse, probably a better word. And it would go back, well, it would be an unused license.
Okay.
You good?
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember Baker.
Oh, thank you. Thanks. That was one of the questions I was going to ask, too, was what happens after the next six months? Just to kind of, again, clarify, because I had read, read all that. Can you help, again, the notion of the litigation came up. Can you help just set, remind us where they ranked in? Were they one of the top two or were they in the contentious three?
I can answer that. We were in the contentious.
Thank you.
Right, they were, recall, we had the three-way tie for third place.
Yes.
And I believe both, both applicants, or excuse me, both licensees who are before you tonight were, were part of that three-way, three-way tie.
Great, thank you. And although I am curious about the construction delays attributed to the Wiltshire Project, given that you're actually on Woodward and the construction's like in the neighborhoods and stuff, I don't, I don't need to hear the story tonight.
Okay. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on M-6523?
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
No.
Gavin?
No.
Henin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Motion number M-6523 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call, or read item number eight on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-6623, matter of considering a 180-day extension of marijuana business license PMA 20-0007 for Yellow Tail Ventures LLC, number 1, 312011 Mile Road.
Is there a motion to approve M-6623?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Henin?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Patterson. Mr. Baumgarten.
I know council knows this, but for those watching at home, this is put to the same test. This request is derived from the same standard that was applied to the previous agenda item. Completely different entity. It just, by happenstance, they're under the same timeline.
Thank you. Anything to add, Mr. Sterren?
I was just going to say, were they approved the same evening as?
I believe that's, I'm sorry, one meeting later.
I think, I think they were a little bit later. They were-
Yes, October 17th, 2022.
Yellow Tail was the last license approved by council. So they've got maybe a couple, a couple weeks more in addition to if the council grants the 180-day request this evening.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Guyer or Mr. Aiello, or both, whoever's representing.
Good evening, council, mayor, Mr. Baumgartner, Mr. Sterren. So I do this statewide government outreach, and I have to applaud, I don't see much fighting going on here. You may be amazed to step into my shoes and where I go in this state and what I do on the local level, so I have to applaud each and every one of you up there. Looks like you guys get along. And then I want to give a shout-out. Kim Anderson, ACES. Sean Young, ACES. John Sterren has helped us. When we have an email, it comes back, and within a day, we get an answer or a phone call. It's just unusual for attorneys to call back within a day. And then, of course, Mr. Baumgartner, he's helped us on, with ever questions we have, whatever issues came about our desk. So you're doing the right, you're headed in the right direction from top to bottom, from what I see. But our excuses for not being done yet, if you want to hear them. We had an architect pass away early on. We had a wall fall down. If any of you've driven by 11 Mile and seen our project, I think it was April or May or April when we were closing on the building. Before we closed, someone knocked the rear wall in. And that wall fell on the cars on the house behind us, and caused almost some litigation, caused a 60-day delay to close, getting through all the insurance companies, looking at the purchase agreement to determine if I purchased a building that only has a half a wall on it. So once we got through all of that, we had to give the tenants who decided to retire. And we're, see you later, adios. So we gave them in our purchase agreement 60 days to wind up. We helped them move out. We did that. So there were a lot of things that are going on in this deal. Plus, we had two other stores statewide that we had to get up under the same time restraints. And we're pretty good at operating under pressure. We had Green Buddha in Ferndale that made it within a week, and then Lincoln Park made it in one day under timelines in those respective jurisdictions. But that was because we reached out and we're always talking to the right people within the city, telling them this is where we're at. Here we are. Cabinets are coming in tomorrow. Laminants coming in, products coming in. We're getting there. And so we know how to work it closely and let you guys know what's going on. We'll get it done. We've done it before. You'll see the dumpster out there now. We got the blocks cleaned up. They're out, the tenants are out, personal property is out. And so now, I don't know where we're going to start inside or out this one. I'm not sure yet. But it's a pretty big haul for requirements, for retention underneath. And so we'll get it done. And appreciate a yes vote from everyone. Show a vote of confidence for us. We want to do business in Berkeley, and we'll support you in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Any discussion from council? Oh, sorry, public comment?
Interesting timing.
Discussion from council. Councilmember Valani?
So to our attorneys from Yellow Tail, just to confirm, you are confident you can be open within this six-month window without any additional requests for extensions?
Always confident.
Okay.
Thanks.
Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you guys for being here. You've been very professional with your communications. And again, just to reaffirm for those, like, I don't know how they slice this up on YouTube, if this is a separate thing or if it's one stuff. So just to confirm again that these are part of the, they're not in the top two. They were in the subsequent three. Is that?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And then I just wanted to say, you know, although your trials and tribulations in other municipalities are really not of interest to me, I am really hopeful that nobody was hurt in, in, when that wall fell and folks-
Just our pocketbook. That's it.
Well, that's, yeah, that's, you know, human life is, so I'm, again, sympathies to, to the trauma and the emotional stress of all of that that happened. And I'm very thankful that no- And I'm very thankful that nobody was hurt.
One more shout-out to my good friend, Ms. Randazzo, in the building department.
Nice.
Thanks.
Nice, excellent. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M. sixty-six twenty-three.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
No.
Gavin?
No.
Henon?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. M. sixty-six twenty-three has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number nine on tonight's regular agenda?
Resolution number R. twenty-two twenty-three, matter of considering a resolution in support and funding commitment of the joint application of the Reconnecting Communities Grant Program.
Is there a motion to approve R. twenty-two twenty-three?
So moved.
Support?
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Gavin with support from councilmember Vilani. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If you'll recall, last year, we made a similar approach to, a similar attempt to try to land this planning grant for the communities listed. At the time, it was ourselves, Oak Park, Huntington Woods. We were talking to Royal Oak, but they weren't a hundred percent sure what they wanted to do. This year, we managed to have additional conversations, strengthen our application, adding Royal Oak formerly and as well as adding the cities of Southfield and Madison Heights as well. We've had some great conversations with them. They, like us, share Eleven Mile and want to make some improvements to the connectivity of its streets. It's amazing how just a little patch of concrete can be quite the dividing line. But we do see that in many, many cases, and it certainly seems to be the truth for Eleven Mile. One of the things that I want to draw your attention to, the fourth whereas, and thank you to councilmember Henon for pointing this out, fourth whereas starts with the city of Berkeley is the home. If passed this evening, I would like to make an edit to that. That should be the Berkeley School District. And we list those three schools, Anderson, Norup, and Berkeley High School. Those are walking-age students that traverse Eleven Mile to go back and forth between the cities of Berkeley, Huntington Woods, and Oak Park. So we do see that as a barricade for young and old. We've had at least one stakeholder event so far. We tried to invite as many people as we could and have as many conversations. Oak Park has been the lead on this, and it was a lot of their residents. But they did cite, you know, even younger, old. They all have a little bit of difficulty getting across Eleven Mile. It's four lanes wide. It's difficult to traverse. There's not a lot of reliable lights back and forth. And for, at least for Berkeley, I keep making the point of this, is for us, a significant portion of it is actually residential. And it's residential that affronts what feels like a major street. And it doesn't not, and our neighbors in Huntington Woods have a pretty similar issue as well. So really, the nature and the build doesn't match what has historically been a residential street for us. So these are all the things that we want to study. How do you do it better? How do you make some more connectivity? How do you get students back and forth? How do you get people that want to visit Huntington Woods Parks or Oak Park's Brainerd Entertainment District? How do you get them back and forth safely in a manner that they can rely on and that will actually entice them to use the amenities that are there? It's one thing they have a crosswalk, but if everybody crosses thirty feet to the north or thirty feet to the east, it's not a useful tool for people. So there's much to be studied, and that's really the extent of this grant. It's not a construction grant at all. So even if we were to get it, even if we love the recommendations that are made over the course of the public input and the studying we do, we are still going to have to pursue additional outside resources before we can even swing a hammer here. So this is a plan to study.
Thank you. Any public input on this agenda item? Discussion from council?
I just have one. I think it's great that we're collaborating and using the strengths of our neighboring cities and coming together and trying to find a solution that'll help Berkeley. I mean, we'll also contribute our strengths. I'm not saying we won't, but all the minds in this area together, together, I think will help. And hopefully, we will see some great resolutions.
Thank you.
Or aspirations.
Okay. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on R. twenty-two twenty-three?
Baker?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. R. twenty-two twenty-three has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number ten on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M. sixty-seven twenty-three, matter of approving the joint agreement for election services between Oakland County, City of Berkeley, City of Huntington Woods, City of Oak Park, and City of Pleasant Ridge.
Is there a motion to approve M. sixty-seven twenty-three?
So moved, Your Honor.
Support?
Motion made by councilmember Baker with support from councilmember Vilani. Mr. Baumgartner?
Actually, Madam Mayor, if I could, I would defer to the city clerk on this.
Absolutely. Ms. Mitchell?
Yes, thank you very much for considering this item. Per my memo, I did outline why I feel this is a beneficial partnership with our neighboring communities. We have spent a great deal of time, all the clerks in these communities, as well as members of the clerk's office team, going through proposal two, which was passed in 2022 by the voters. And we're at the point now where we need to start implementing some of the aspects of the proposal. And one of those is early voting. So in order to provide nine days of early voting for all Michigan residents, we need to come up with a plan. It is costly. It is, has been time-consuming. We have been meeting with the Michigan Department of Elections, Oakland County Department of Elections, and neighboring clerks to work together to come to an agreement and a plan that would allow voters this wonderful opportunity to have nine days of early voting, but also be affordable and secure for all the voters. So with this agreement, we have come together with these neighboring communities under the guidance of Oakland County, who is taking on the lion's share of this agreement. They are working to develop the procedures that will be put in place and are also providing a great deal of funding to make this become a reality. I also appreciate looking at this so swiftly and city attorney Sterren for reviewing this agreement. We are trying to get this approved by the deadlines. All these communities have this on their agenda this week, as we do feel it's very important to offer this in November so we can do a trial run, more or less, to make sure we're prepared for next year presidential season.
Thank you. So yet another example of an unfunded mandate, perhaps?
Yes, some funded, some unfunded.
Right, got it. Okay, thank you. Any public input on this agenda item? Discussion from council. Councilmember Vilani?
I would like to commend our clerk and the other ones in your teams for putting your heads together and finding a way that we can do this and preserve as many resources as possible, because we know it is expensive. But your vote is your voice, and it is one of the most important rights and obligations that you have as a citizen. So thank you for all the work that you're doing to ensure that people will have as much time as possible to participate in their civic duty there.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. And I'd like to echo my colleagues' comments absolutely a thousand percent. The only thing I could add is if we do have like a Friends of the City Clerk's Office Committee, I would love to be the liaison, because
Okay, that would be wonderful.
What you do is so important, and I echo those sentiments, that this is fundamental to our country and our democracy and our city, is to be able to have the ability to safely and vote with confidence. And the work that you and your collaborators are doing to make this safe and efficient and as cost-effective as we can be, especially with partnership with the county taking on the lion's share, I think is great. So let me know if you get a committee together.
Okay, I will, absolutely.
I'll show up at every meeting.
Okay. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M. sixty-seven twenty-three.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Motion number M. sixty-seven twenty-three has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number eleven on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M. sixty-eight twenty-three, matter of considering amendments to the fiscal year 2023-24 budget.
Is there a motion to approve M. sixty-eight twenty-three?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Gavin?
Support.
With support from councilmember Baker. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We are approaching the end of the first quarter for our fiscal year, which does start on the first of July, so it runs July, August, and September. So as we usually do, we looked at trends and any early indications that perhaps our budgets needed to be amended, either up or down. And so this item comes before you today. I do want to call your attention to two items in particular. I did highlight sections of the spreadsheet export that you have. This is specifically to show the changes in service, the reductions in service, the effects of service changes in our Department of Public Works related to both chipping as well as the curb site leaf collection. We were going to have a pre and a post section of this. This is the anticipated things that we can kind of do the educated guesswork now, looking at how the program is going to go. And then we're going to have a version, our second quarter budget amendments, which will reflect some of the real-world and sort of completed equipment costs that go along with this. A good portion of our leaf collection program is very weather contingent. And so whereas we have, we ask that our residents put out their leaves between November sixth and November twenty-fourth, it is going to take time even beyond those dates for our Department of Public Works to make it all the way through the city, to get the streets completely clear, and be ready for when the snowplow season begins. And that, again, it depends on a lot of different things. Leaves can be somewhat predictable. We picked the November sixth to the twenty-fourth is because when we look back historically, that's when our volumes are the largest. But different species fall at different times. So we could end up, it's not unreasonable to say that we could be working until that first or second week in December, just to get the leaves that were put out between the sixth and the twenty-fourth. So for that reason, it's really difficult for us to accurately project equipment costs from we stand now. But when we come back to you likely in February for the second quarter budget amendments, we will have those numbers well and fully in hand. Some of the improvements we've made in our finance department, credit to Lori Fielder, allow us to better track what those costs are and more closely attribute them to the correct fund that they came out of, specifically in this case, our solid waste fund, which fund number is two-two-six. So what you have in here is additional labor, anticipated labor costs that would need to come out of two-two-six and be placed into the general fund. That's the tune of about seventy-two thousand dollars. Again, this is an area where our workers are being taken out of two-two-six, placed in the general fund because it helps that fund get by. But as we have looked at this more accurately and dialed in, we do anticipate that more money needs to come to fully cover those costs. The general fund does not need to be supplementing the solid waste fund any longer, and we are working towards getting that to be the case. That's one of the reasons why so many of these things, what we ask for millage is to supplement the general fund. So many of our service cuts did end up coming out of two-two-six. They've become so intertwined over the years, they're both heavily affected as far as their major revenue source and the millage for those, that we had to kind of go back and forth. Again, we were talking about a number of different ways to better present this. We have Plant working on this. We've got Lori Fielder working on this, myself included. But there's going to be more to come, and we're hoping by the time we bring our budget back to you, we've got a document that almost anybody can pick up in this community, look at it and say, all right, it cost me that much every year to have my leaves collected. It cost me that much to have my yard waste collected, which right now, by the nature of fund accounting, can be very difficult. The rest of the things that are included in this report are, you see, in at least two different cases, both the communications position and the finances director position, we've got offsetting, we're reducing the salary projections because those positions have not been filled for the bulk of the first quarter. We've been supplementing them with contractual services. That's why you see the offsets there. And then there were some purchases here and there that looks like already the trend is, seems to be that it's a project that we've canceled or there's something that looks like it's going to be in over budget from what we anticipated. So all in all, pretty standard first-quarter budget amendments, and we look forward to reporting out to you subsequent amendments as they come up. The second thing, of the two things I wanted to point out was that there's a bottom-line fund balance calculation that's included in each of these pages for each fund. As a fluke of the system that we use, those, when we said, run me the fund balance, since our current fiscal year has not been closed, it's not been audited, it came all the way back to the last year in which it had been. And so those numbers, those bottom-line numbers that reflect the fund balance for each fund, aren't accurate to this fund year. Again, by a fluke of BSNA, they're adding one year to another. Not valid, but the, again, the line item numbers absolutely are valid, and the departmental totals are correct as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any public input on this agenda item? Discussion from council. Oh, wait, is there someone? Yes.
I have one email, Joshua Hunter, Berkeley. In regard to the 2023-2024 fiscal year budget amendment, the document shows the beginning balances from the prior fiscal year instead of the current fiscal year. This is grossly inflating the current fiscal year ending balances for the funds in the amendment schedule. Finally, what is the current reserve percentage for the ending general fund balance? Residents need to understand if the twenty-five percent reserve policy is being followed.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Discussion from council. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you. And thank you for the explanation. I believe that you preempted some of the thoughts that were in that note, which was helpful. And again, kudos to you and the team for, in spite of the staffing challenges that we faced, to be able to provide us with accurate information, notwithstanding some software flukes, and so that we can make a thoughtful decision tonight. Thank you.
I was just going to also thank you for, pretty much exactly as my colleague has said, but also thank you for working on making it easier for our residents to understand our budget. It is a very complicated living document, and I think sometimes all of us have a harder time reading them if we're not familiar with them or haven't went through the budget work session. So I appreciate that work being done to help remit that.
Councilmember Henon?
Yeah, and I would point out, our fund balance policy does require, when we do amendments, to also, you know, provide what the current, where we are on the balances. That's missing tonight, so I hope we can have that as part of the packet in the next meeting and then going forward.
Seeing no other comments, I would just like to add that kudos to Lori Fielder for doing a lot of the heavy lifting. With the audit right now and onboarding BSNA, it's difficult when you're down people in a department, and this one is so critical, and she's done a tremendous job. And thank you to our city manager Baumgartner for being a support to her and digging in and helping to get things done.
If I may, just, the thought occurs, right, so those of us that are still coming up, if there's folks coming up to speed on this stuff, the notion of an audit could be scary, right? We love having the audit. We look forward to it every year. It is a positive step for our city and our community. And so, you know, as we talk about the audit coming up and stuff like that, I just want to let folks know, this is what we want to have happen. You want this to have happen.
Definitely.
Right? For a third party to come in and look at everything and lift up every rock and look at everything that's going on under there, we welcome this. We look forward to it.
We do.
It's a part of our annual process. And so in this particular case, since this isn't the IRS, audits are good. And we're just, we're just really looking forward to learning and being able to grow and continue to
Yes.
To provide the fiscal responsibility that we seek, you know, that our residents deserve.
Checks and balances.
Yeah.
Yes.
So thank you. Thank you for what you said.
Sure. Thanks for the follow-up. Okay, any other comments? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M. sixty-eight twenty-three.
Henon?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. M. sixty-eight twenty-three has passed. Communications?
Councilmember Patterson.
Oh, you were ready with that, okay.
Excuse me. The Planning Commission will be meeting Tuesday, nine twenty-six at seven PM here in chambers. That's all I have.
Okay. Councilmember Henon?
Yeah, the Tree Board, their summer hiatus is over, and they'll be meeting one week from tonight, September twenty-fifth. The Zoning Board of Appeals met in August and denied a lot split for a lot that wasn't large enough. They don't have any cases for September, and they won't have any cases in October either. That's all I have.
Councilmember Baker?
Hey, that's me. Thank you. So happy September, everybody. The DDA Downtown Development Authority met Wednesday, the thirteenth. They accepted the Berkeley, the parking study and the strategic plan. And I'd like to again extend my gratitude to
And I'd like to again extend my gratitude to the community development and all the folks that were involved in that, all the residents that provided input into that document. Three mural applications are under consideration, and going forward, those will go through the ZBA for consideration as part of that process, so that's exciting. They're planning the soft launch for the Berkeley Outdoor Social Scene, BOSS, the BOSS, which will be on 12 Mile. We have three businesses that have finished the registration and application process at the state level as well as the city. That's Mongers Provisions, Amici's, and El Patio. And there's some additional businesses in that stretch that are working to consider and move forward with that. More communication will be coming as the social district is finalized. So I just want to say, save the date for November 18th. November 18th is a celebration of life for Vivian Carmody. So Vivian was our prior DDA executive director, fantastic force in the community, helped establish so much of the foundational groundwork that our current DDA and future DDAs will benefit from. We have tremendous leadership today in Mr. McGinnis, and the board is amazing. And they acknowledge and recognize the great work that Vivian did to help get us to where we're at today. She was tragically killed in a car accident a while ago. And so if you're able, we'll have more news available on November 18th. And if you want to know more about the rest of the downtown stuff, visit downtownberkeley.com. Historical Committee, they have three dates that they'd like us to be aware of, so I'll just get right off through those real quick. They're all kind of coming up. September 29th, Friday night, in a tribute to the Berkeley Theater, you may have seen this thing, it's, you know, it's on 12 Mile there. The Redford Theater is going to show Butch Cassidy and the Sundance Kid, featuring Robert Redford and Paul Newman. You may have seen that film. If not, you should. And in fact, you could go to the Redford to do that. That movie has the longest run in the history of the Berkeley Theater, where it ran for over 100 days. And we'll have a display of pictures of that of the Berkeley Theater, and of the last owner of the Berkeley Theater will be there at the Redford. That's awesome. Starts at eight o'clock. Tickets are eight bucks. Again, that's not coming up on the 29th. This is being held to commemorate the 30th anniversary of the closing of Berkeley Theater, so 30 years. The very next day, Saturday, the 30th, there'll be a tour, so the kit home tour. You may remember that Berkeley is one of the largest populations of kit homes, and if you don't know what that is, it's basically, they used to sell, have catalogs, like in the, back in the day, where you could buy a house in a catalog and have it, all the lumber and bolts and screws and all that stuff delivered, and you could put it together with your friends and family. And so that's with, and I'm sure we'll hear more on the chamber side, there are tremendous leaders in that. Advanced tickets are 25. There's 10 homes being featured, five of which you can go in and five others you can walk around. And that's awesome. And then coming up on Saturday, October 14th, at 3:30, the Michigan Historical Marker will be unveiled at, just kind of behind us here, at the 1928 Fire Station Village Hall. And we'd love to have you there for the grand unveiling. We'll also be doing the time capsule, and there'll be cupcakes. I should have probably opened with cupcakes.
For sure.
Cupcakes are awesome. Come visit the museum Wednesdays from 10 to 1 and Sundays from 2 to 4, and their website is berkeleyhistory.com. And finally, in 1978, it was Ali Willis who wrote, "Do you remember the 21st night in September? Love was changing the lives of pretenders..." I'm going to keep going until you guys... So we are in September. It is the fall, and I do like disco, and that was really fun. So I wanted to offer up some fall safety tips. Be cautious of the back-to-school traffic. You know, kids are walking around, we heard earlier about commutes from across 11 Mile. Be alert. Don't be fooled by the falling leaves. I know the leaf pickup is coming up later in November. I don't know if there's a November song, but September's pretty cool. But those leaves can conceal hidden objects and things that you may not want to step on or trip on or get hurt. Avoid slips and trips and falls from the rain, especially as the ground around us is unstable. We are entering the flu season, and you may have heard this COVID thing is coming back, so please stay on top of that. Get your jab if you're into that kind of stuff, which I think, which I certainly will. And wash your hands. And, you know, they always say when the time change, right? Check your batteries and your smoke detectors and things like that. I mean, it's fundamental, but it's like, your lives are important, and I want to make sure that at least you think about that, right? So and then if you are walking around, please wear something reflective. If you're walking your dog or riding your bicycle or something like that, you know, make sure people can see you because the light, the time change is different and all that stuff. And finally, as you guys know, I like to say, please hug somebody you love, even if it's a dog, because they need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. For Parks and Rec, a couple things that I wanted to highlight here. I have a number of senior lunches, casino trips, and other outings scheduled over the next couple months. So you can call or stop in the office or go online to recreation.berkleymish.org. Senior Fitness is back on Tuesdays and Fridays at 9:30 in the community center. Drop in for $3 per class. Trivia Tuesday is running on October 31st and December 5th, as well as Fall Fun Bingo running on September 19th and November 24th, or, excuse me, 14th. We have lots for our seniors to do this fall and early winter season, so that's exciting stuff. Youth and adult programs are back in the community center this fall, so check out registrations online. And Parks and Rec is closing out the outdoor movie season on October 28th with a showing of Hocus Pocus at Oxford Park at 6:00 PM. So join us for some spooky fun, and no registration is required for that. The Halloween Fun continues with our annual Tail on the Trail event being held on Thursday, October 19th at now Bacon Park. Registration is required and opens at the end of the week. And then join us for the grand opening of the new inclusive playground at Bacon Park this Wednesday at 6:00 PM. And lastly, October 12th at 7:00 PM at the community center is the next meeting for Parks and Rec. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Valani?
All right. There are no updates from the Technology Advisory or our Citizens Engagement Committee since they have not had any meetings since our last meeting. Echoing on Councilmember Baker's comments about the kit home tour, you can get your tickets for $25 at the Berkeley Chamber. They are still looking for volunteers to help out with the event, and you get a free ticket, so...
And a cupcake, hopefully.
I don't know if they let you have cupcakes in the house. I can't promise that. That's on you, not me.
Come to the museum for cupcakes.
Oh, and it's November rain would be the November song.
Oh, brilliant. Boom. Drop your mic.
Also, for our Berkeley Area Chamber, get your stretch pants on because Restaurant Weekend is coming back, October 6th and 7th, at participating restaurants in Berkeley. More details to come, so if you are so inclined, please go out, support your local restaurateurs. We have lots of great places in Berkeley to dine. A couple of thank yous to, first, our Beautification Committee, who recently spent some time on a Saturday cleaning up Friends Park. I got to watch that in progress. It is right around the corner from my house. It is gorgeous now, what they did there, and that was all volunteer effort, so really appreciate that. I greatly like walking by there every day. And then also, thank you to the Berkeley School District, who invited us to be part of their back-to-school rally right before school started. It was exciting to see that other arm of our community there. And echoing on Councilmember Baker's safety tips, there are a lot of kiddos not always paying attention on the roads now that school is back in session, so please be careful. And that is it.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you. Cue me up with rain. We did want to report out to the council and the community regarding the back-to-back storms we had August 24th and 25th. Anybody who's visited City Hall since that day knows that City Hall itself also experienced a sewage backup, which led to a mold issue, which led to us essentially having to gut the, our finance offices. We tried to mitigate and treat some of the mold that was discovered there. So anybody that walks into City Hall, we apologize for our front face to the world. We did quite a bit of carpet torn up, and then it's just kind of been a construction site here in the last couple of weeks as we've torn out and investigated and treated and sampled and air tested and many, many other things. But in addition to our own city facilities, we had about 54 individuals submit claims or send emails or turn in to us, or give some indication that they had water in their basements. This storm parallels the August, what was it, August 28th storm we had back in 2017. Intensity was similar, time of night was similar. And that storm, we had nearly 1,000 homes that were affected in some way with water in the basements. Now we're looking at something closer to 50. It doesn't do those affected much good, but on the aggregate, we know that we're heading towards the right direction. Hopefully, next time we get down to zero, that is absolutely where we want to be forever and always. But hopefully, we take a similar storm and with a very different result to be the signs that our Department of Public Service, our Department of Public Works in service to the community has made really smart, appropriate, cost-effective steps to making sure that we have as resilient of a system as possible. These storms aren't going away. Collectively, this area, we just sort of spent August and the early part of September just in a collective clutch because anytime the rain starts to fall, anytime you start to see some forecasting, myself, all of our neighboring communities, really anybody that finds themselves in the George W. Kuhn Sewage Strange District has this same concern and worry every single year. So again, it's definitely muted good news, I think, that we did not have numbers much higher. But again, for those 54 people who turned, who had water in their basement, we're still working at it. We will get there. And then we've really lit a torch under the Oakland County Water Resources Commissioner's Office as well, and hoping to get some good news out of them. It's just been slow to report back out.
Thank you. Mr. Staran?
Nothing this evening, council.
Okay. So I know I've said it twice tonight, unfunded mandates. I am in a space where we just launched the Mayor's Academy for Services and Budget. We had our first meeting last Tuesday night, and Plant Moran came in and did a deep dive into fund-based accounting and all that that implies and all that it entails. We peeled the curtain back, basically, on our budget and how funds are funded and how you can use that money or not use it. And the unfunded mandates are just a part of what the city has to deal with, and all municipalities, really. It's not just Berkeley. It's all of us, having an understanding of headly in Proposition A and how that works to erode your tax base. So it really is a, you know, there are so many things, lots of moving parts, and our hope is, we have 16 people in this first cohort, and we hope to and will offer this again on a yearly basis, but it'll be through an application process. So stay tuned for that if you're interested. I just think that it's, in our continued transparency, the city takes it very seriously, and this is yet another way that we can continue to be transparent. I want to thank Plant Moran for their excellent presentation. Thank you, City Manager Baumgarten, for your also excellent presentation and doing a lot of the heavy lifting to get this off the ground. I know when I came to, when I pitched this idea to you, he schooled his face, but I knew, I knew what I was asking of him, but I do think that it's necessary, and departments have been responsive. And I will thank department heads as well and their staff for also contributing to this so that we have each week a look at a different department, their budget, any unfunded mandates and services that they deliver. It's been a minute since we met. You know, we're, I think, six weeks since the last meeting, and a lot of fun things have happened in Berkeley. We've had Cruise Fest, and we've had the Irish Fest. And one of the things that I noticed, I normally, full disclosure, don't attend the Irish Fest, but this year I did. And it was a lot of fun. Both Irish Fest and Cruise Fest, there were just generations of people, families, extended families. Cruise Fest is almost like a reunion of sorts. People, well, I grew up in Berkeley, but I live in Commerce now, and I come back every year for Cruise Fest because it's just so fun, and I meet up with school friends. And just the vibe that was in our downtown, that's the priceless piece of this equation. You know, we had Denise Davis and the Motor City Sensations. We had a movie at the Neighbor Shop. With a lot of support from IKEA, they donated furniture for the night. Then that furniture was donated to people that are coming out of homelessness, going into a home, their own home, so that furniture rested here in Berkeley for an evening, and then it went on to be in someone's home and provide for a family, which is always a feel-good thing. And I just think that part of what makes Berkeley Berkeley are these events, and I want to thank the volunteers because without you, these events couldn't happen in the way that they do. I want to thank all the department heads, especially DPW, Parks and Recreation, and Berkeley Public Safety. Again, lots of moving parts. So many things go into closing a street, keeping an event safe for everyone. And speaking of DPW, when you call there, please be nice to Janice, Diane, and Ashley. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Valani with support from Councilmember Patterson. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The Monday, September 18th, 2023, meeting of the Berkeley City Council is adjourned.